Good evening. Mike Paul.
Good evening, and welcome to the special joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Design Review Committee on Thursday, March 13th, 2025. I now call the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Lisa, could we have a roll call, please?
Esther Jacob-- sorry, Chair Jacobson Bates?
Here.
Melissa Bates?
Here.
Vice Chair Boyd?
Here.
Committee Member Goodt's?
Here.
Committee Member Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks Gillis?
Here.
Commissioner Ziegler?
Here.
Vice Chair Adler absent, Chair Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pleasure allegiance, Bill. Would you lead us, please?
Ready, cross your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, which is standing on the nation in the best of all with the thirteen justices for all.
Thank you. So we have just one item on the agenda tonight. It's a discussion item. Could we get the staff report on this, please?
Thank you, Chair Williams. There's no staff report, other than what we've given you on sort of the background information for this workshop this evening. So before you this evening is a signs and design workshop for those, for actually everybody. You should have a cellphone. If you can get it out, that'd be great, because there's a QR code that's sitting on there. And so this is a very much a participatory or participation-led effort. So we're going to use our cellphones for something. I encourage the crowd to do the same thing. So grab your cellphones. There's a QR code. Take a picture there of the QR code. And this is how we're going to do a participatory workshop. So there's a couple of ways to do it. First one is taking a picture of that QR code that is on your screen. The second way to do it is follow that web link. It's HT or go to mentee.com and enter the code 42086809. Or again, scan the QR code. There's also a Verilog web link on there. I'll leave it up for you. And I'm just going to, you know, ask the first question. So our first question is this. So what do we love about solving? So again, this is a participatory workshop. This is, we're going to have, we're going to go over topics. So the point of, the point of order is we'll go over the topics. And after each topic, we're going to have a discussion amongst the members and then open it up for people to come and talk. But at the same token, we have things that are interactive here and utilizing technology here to basically get folks to engage. So again, if folks are watching out in the internet, you most certainly can do the same thing. But this gives us an idea, and I'm really encouraging that you participate, because this is one way of getting your say in, is, is, you know, telling us, taking a poll or describing a certain topic. There'll be a quiz. So again, the whole point is to solicit participation from not only you, the DRC, but the Planning Commission as well. So as you can see here, we've got 19 responses so far. This is real time, if you want to go to the screen.
The question, did you shoot the QR code? It takes you to a space. One word only? Could you define that, Rafael? What do you love about solving? One word or just enough characters to fill the line?
Phrase, word, be my guess.
There's space for three responses, so you could put three separate responses there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So again, that's the QR code. It should take you to a webpage in a landing. If you want to go grab your phone, that'd be great. Oh, you don't even have it. If you share a link, it means you can only participate once, so. All right. So again, why are we here? So we'll get to your responses in a minute. I'll let you guys fill that in. But we're here for two reasons. One is back in November 12th, we took a feat, we did a survey back in summer 2024 that included, we reached out to all the businesses in the city of Solvang to encourage them to take a survey. And we brought those results back to the city council with sort of a list of items about potential sign ordinance amendments. And so we were requested at then to hold a workshop for that. So that's why we're here. That's one reason why we're here. The second one was as a part of the 2024 zoning ordinance amendments, city council also directed staff to complete a workshop to go over a specific aspect of the objective design standards in the R3 zone. We will cover that as well today. So again, here's what we are covering. We are covering the objective design standards with the R3 lots. And the main question we're going to ask is, how do we make control with DRC input over new projects? So we've, you know, there's a litany of new state laws that are out, and we recognize that we need to go through objective standards. So that's a question we're going to ask this evening. The second one is what we have turned into incorporation design handbook. What do we want to see in that, including potential use of approved color palettes? And how do you want to see that? The, the next set of questions are really diving into our sign code. Do we want to use A-frame signs, sandwich board signs within the village or within the city? So that was a question that we specifically asked the city council and specifically asked for a workshop back. The next one is additional temporary signage, and we'll get into what that looks like and what that is. And again, these two primary questions are stemming from the feedback we received from our businesses in the summer of 2024. And finally, elimination of content-based regulation or replacement with objective standards when it comes to signs. And so as many in the DRC know, we've had this discussion quite often about our content-based regulations and how we can replace those with objective standards due to case law. So again, one more chance, if you haven't done it yet. This is the QR code, and we'll flip back really quick to what everyone said on the first question. It should be right there on the screen, if you want to try it one more time. Yeah, I understand that, which is why we're doing both here, get a chance to talk, but also participate. So here are the 49 responses, and it's a lot of responses. So the way a word cloud works is, as long as a word gets frequently used more and more often, it means the word becomes bigger and bigger. So this is sort of a warm-up, essentially. Hello, friendly, quaint, community, architecture, history, Danish, those are sort of the big highlights. But also out there is small and safe, beautiful, Danish small town, food and wine, as you see, there's more responses are coming through, old world charm. So again, this was sort of a warm-up to get people to think about our community. And we're going to go on to the next question. And the question was, and it's a quiz. So which of the following statements are objective standards? So I'm going to read out these statements, so you can see them on your phone. Front yard setback consistent with character of the neighborhood, is that an objective standard? Minimum front setback between six and 10 feet, is that an objective standard? Setback shall be minimum distance feasible to protect and preserve property values, is that an objective standard? Or side setback shall be determined by the Planning Commission based on findings, is that an objective standard? So six people have logged in. Seven? Eight? I know, it's fun, isn't it? Give a couple more minutes. It's not a yes or no question. It's using our thoughts here. Give a couple more minutes or a couple more seconds. And the answer is actually the ones, folks that did the 73%, you are correct. Minimum front setback between six and 10, that's an objective standard. And so that is what's considered a quantifiable standard. That means anybody can go out with a tape measure, and if told the rhyme and reason for way, something gets measured, we can quantify that. That's an objective standard. The other three, the other three phrases, 6% and the other two 13s, those are actually were in our code. They've been removed, so as a part of the 2024 zoning ordinance update. And again, becoming objective. So that's sort of the key to remember, is we're trying to become objective. So it was sort of an exercise to get us thinking of objective standards, and specifically we had, as a part of the 2024 zoning ordinance update, we had a lot of confusion about residential properties in the Village mixed use and the design district. So the red line that you see on your screen is the properties that were included as a part of the Village Design District. So originally, these properties were left out of the design district as a part of the Planning Commission recommendation in June of 2024. The Planning Commission elected to recommend that these properties be placed in, and their recommendation was so that it'll look very similar between the blocks, and we'll get into that in a minute. So what that means is it, so currently, these set of R3 properties, and R3, for those that don't know, is high-density residential, and we do have a few vacant pieces of property. These require, so currently, the way our objective standards are set, they require these properties to develop similarly in design to the adjacent properties. So those adjacent properties are some hotels across the street and hotels to the east and then, and then not so much to the west. So again, with the inclusion of residential in the design districts, objective standards was extremely critical to be in place. And the reason is below is there's, in the late aughts, late teen aughts, the state of California changed what was called the Housing Accountability Act. And it stated that the city cannot deny a project or condition a project in such a way that would require it to be developed at a lower density. So that's one of the primary drivers of having and us codifying these objective standards in the village. The second is a project that would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety that is based on objective, identical, public health and safety standards is basically the only way you could deny a residential project. So again, if the intent was to have these R3 properties in sort of the mix to be designed just like its neighboring properties, that is the genesis of why we have the objective standards. So essentially, a city is unable to deny or condition a project based on subjective standards. And this is specifically referring to residential projects only, not a mixed-use project that is majority commercial with a few residential units, or say, a mixed-use project that has 51% commercial and 49% residential. We still have the ability to be subjective, at least for the time being. But if a mixed-use project has 51% residential or more of the gross floor area, then it has to be objective. So these are a couple of things you want to keep in mind. So. The village for now. And then specifically, when we're talking residential, it's districts, that's meant to have residential, so that would apply too. So again, we're going to go and back in, oh, before we take the quiz. So this is a picture of what's there today. And so the picture on the north is the hotel with our Danish look. You got the, and then we have essentially a four-plex, but it's actually individual units there, in the background and foreground. Currently, there's a one cottage sitting there. There's a proposed or potential development that's in that, where that property is, where you see that one single cottage. And then on the image below is a hotel and a project that was recently completed is six short-term rental units. So again, that, that kind of gives you the look in the field of this street. And so it makes sense that that was the genesis of the comments, to put those residentials into the villa, into the design district and therefore basically have the aesthetic look of the old world Danish design. So we're going to go on. Now that we have set up, there's a question for everybody. This or that? So on your phone, there's a question. So the picture on your left-hand side is no objective standard. And this is actually an image from what was originally the 425th Street project, the original iteration of it. Boxy design, anywhere USA. But if we took out those R3 lots, there would be no objective standard. Image on your right is actually the first iteration of 539 Alisol. Now, it did change color-wise, but it gives you an idea of what those lots would look like if it had to meet our current existing objective standard that is in place today that was approved back in December. So has everybody voted? Sorry, sorry, I got to jump back and forth. I should have popped for the program. So majority of, the majority of folks, 100% even, wanted the other look. And so again, this is a thinking exercise before we dive into the discussion, to ask ourselves if that's what we want for this block, if that's what we want for something that is internal to this block alone, because there was a lot of confusion at that council meeting about what the design district means, what the objective standard means. And again, the objective standard is the starting point, and it's always has been that starting point. And it's sort of morphed as we've went along through, you know, how we go about doing the objective standard. So again, these represent a starting point. The city can require a Danish design element through the objective standards, which is what we're doing today. It's what's been codified today. And if the goal of the general plan is to have these residential lots have a design consistent with Solvang Village area, this can only be done through the application of objective design standards. If we want to remove them, then it's a free, we have no objective standards in our high-density or medium-density. We don't have objective standards yet for our residential, but we did for our village. So that's something to keep in mind. So we were asked, we tasked as a part of the December, the second reading, we came up with three sort of bullets to have this discussion, and I'm going to throw it out here, and then we'll do a quiz, and then we'll, we're under discussion. But the three options are as follows. We can amend the general plan and zoning ordinance, remove the R3 lots. We could do that. That was one of the things that were thrown out at the city council meeting by a couple speakers. We most certainly can't. But as demonstrated in the slides, is that something we really want to do? Another item that was thrown out is repeal the objective standards altogether. As I've mentioned before, it's a starting point. We can refine our code as we go along and as we see fit. As a matter of fact, in our last DRC meeting, Chair Bates made a comment about colors. That actually was a striking one, because it's looking at colors in context. And how do we do that in an objective standard? Well, there's a way we can do it, which means we'll need to amend it if we want to do that. And so it's a reminder that our code isn't set in stone, like it's been set in stone for the last 30-plus years here, because no one's wanted to toy with it. Another option is to amend specifically Table 11.7 to allow up to 49% of the gross floor area to residential uses for all uses. That was a suggestion thrown out there. There may be one issue with that. If you do that to every single building, it basically takes away the flexibility of our existing property owners to potentially convert and upstairs vacant offices or spaces that don't function in our current economy or economy of the future. It doesn't give that property owner flexibility. Is that something we want to see? The whole point of the general plan, and the reason why we had a G-PAC and fought so hard was to really champion infill design. But by doing that, if we were to limit all uses to only 49% of the gross floor area, while we accomplish the control that we're looking for, we essentially are taking away a tool of infill and a tool from property owners, existing property owners who potentially want to keep their properties here and don't want to sell, but they can't, because they can't make income on those second-story offices or third-story offices. But they can if they're able to convert those to residential apartments. Okay. So what that means is I have a 5,000-square-foot building. So the gross floor area is everything in the building itself. And so if 2,505 square feet is dedicated to residential uses, now I can only deny a project if it's, I can only utilize tools that are objective standards, and objective standards only. It can't be subjective. Does that, does that make sense?
Not entirely, because I thought you already told us we couldn't use subjective standards.
Again, if it's an all-residential project.
Okay, we're speaking all-residential.
If it's a project that's 51% commercial, you can use subjective standards. But if it's a project that's 51% residential. You cannot.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Currently, the law is, doesn't, it doesn't say 50/50. It currently just says it's a, it's a free rein. Oh, no, that's gone too. Now it's allows, it allows for, as it stands today, it allows for upstairs offices to convert. There's no percentage. The only thing it says currently today is you can't convert ground floor to commercial uses to residential. And you can't, and if it's a single story, you can't convert the front-facing on the street to residential, if it's commercial. Because again, we want to maintain that commercial level. It changed with the zoning ordinance. Yeah. Correct. It was a secondary use. That's what it was before. Not even that. It was way lower than that. It was. Secondary at the time utilized a formula that basically took into account a percentage of the gross floor area, and it was down to about 20%, give or take, of conversion of commercial. It was a tough formula to even get units in. That's correct. So let me, let me get into that for a minute. So the point is, the discussion is, there was no clarification of whether the structure was new or existing, which is why there's the fourth bullet there, which is what city staff has come up with in your staff report. If this, based on this workshop and based on the outcome, if we want to still maintain sort of that subjective control, however, we want to provide flexibility for our existing property owners, and that means they're not going to change the facades, they're just going to, what's called adaptively reuse their space, then we could potentially amend zoning ordinance 11.7, which limits 49% of the gross floor area to residential for new structures only. It's almost essentially the best of both worlds, where we advocate for adaptive reuse of our buildings on the second and third floors, but our new structures would be limited to 49% max, which then allows it to be subjective. But we keep our objective design standards, because that way it gives them the starting point.
Rafael, so if I'm understanding, is this applicable to the entire Village Design District or those I R3-zoned properties within the Village Design District?
Within the entire Village Design District, one.
Thank you.
And you're clarifying that this is for new structures only. We are not talking about the renovations that are kind of now gaining momentum in Solvang?
If we wanted to do bullet point four, yeah, that would be the carve-out, would be for new structures. So essentially, if someone were to purchase a piece of property and demo it, and they want to put something completely new, they would be forced to, at least if we amended it, only 49% could be residential uses. Correct, of the gross floor. Couldn't do it.
Then, then the design standards aren't, don't apply in the same way. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. So it's subjective.
Right.
So it comes to the DRC. It can go back and forth in terms of how we want it to look and feel, et cetera. Does that, does that make, does that make sense? I know it's, I know it's extremely complicated, and I, and I get, there's a ton of nuances here. You can't, you can't under state law.
Whatever we've got to do, they foisted upon cities, you know, all that. And so what one of theirs is, is to say that you have to, if it's a residence, you can't go to the DRC and make, let them design it willy-nilly, subjectively. You must be very objective. So what we are trying to carve out was a way to go, well, how much of that could be residential so the DRC could still be subjective to some level? And it came up with, we're hoping, our attorneys have thought, that 51/49. So if it, if the residential is subjective to the commercial, DRC would have control over the design more than if it was the other way around, because the state doesn't care about commercial. So that's where 50/50, the state has, or our attorneys have decided, 50/50 is not good enough. You got to go 51/49. Correct. And then DRC would have more say over what the design is.
And there aren't necessarily concessions that have to be made as well.
Well, it depends. I mean, that's another thing. That's, that's a whole, we're not talking about that. We just want to just keep it to this subset here. So, and again, maintaining the objective standards, because we want those, as mentioned, as, you know, we polled it on the R3, if we kept the look, we got to keep the standard. But again, I think the biggest concern from reviewing the video and listening to the comments of both the DRC, the Planning Commission, some of their comments here from public speakers, is having that control for the new buildings. So that was, that was a concern. What, what if someone demos, purchases a piece of property and demos it? Now what? So this allows sort of that carve-out to happen. So I got a poll. Let's run it.
Can I ask one quick question to clarify, because I'm a little bit confused on this? Wouldn't there be another alternative to come up with an objective standards that actually are referenced by the DRC, that actually create design handbooks for, that apply both to the commercial and the residential within the village and then bypass the percentages?
We'll get there.
Rafael.
It is, kind of. But again, it goes back to the question of, we want to add, at least based on the general plan, based on the infill, based on the policies, you want to advocate infill development. You essentially want to advocate adaptive reuse. So we're talking the exist, Frederick's Court, existing building, they want to take their upstairs, and they want to convert those to residential units, but not touch the outside. Do we want that to be okay? So hence why the car, hence why I had the carve-out. So the next question is, other thoughts on objective design standards? Correct. So currently, the way it's written today, it basically, if it's 500 square feet or over, it's got to go to DRC. So we actually do have a case right now, there's an application that's in process, where that exactly does happen, where an applicant is not looking to change anything on the existing, but looking to add a building. So that building now is kicking into our objective design standards, which now gives us the ability to say, hey, look, you got to meet this standard. And, and we can keep kicking you down the can until you meet the standard and at least bring it back to the DRC for that building only. and at least bring it back to the DRC for that building only. So as is written today, it's already started to practice. And we do have a specific application where that came in, and luckily that was written in. But we can always drop that threshold of 500 square feet if, if we so choose to, which is why this slide is up, because it's, it's, what are those other thoughts? I know that was sort of that main question at the last meeting during the second reading was that question. But again, it's, the whole point of having objective standards is giving people a start. You gotta tell them where to start. And for the longest time, we've had this 1989 design guideline that has a couple shoulds and maybes and we prefers. But if there's an actual design element that we want to see, just tell them. Correct.
Meet the standards you said. Which ones? Objective or subjective?
The objective. They all have to meet the objective standard. Even then, again, even if it's a new structure, even if it's a new structure, it's still got to meet the minimum objectives, design standards. But just because something meets the minimum objective doesn't necessarily mean it, it looks great, and there could be some issues. Does that make sense?
Well, just to understand, you're talking about subjective and objective standards and saying that, okay, we're bound up by state law.
And, and again, that's just residential.
And, and we currently, let me explain. We currently have objective design standards. We have, we have a design guideline that's sitting here objective for, for everything in the DRC or what the TRC is. Absolutely. The residential has to be carved out because these are too subjective. We believe that they've been objective all these years, and we've given them to the DRC and they've interpreted it. We are not only changing and being foisted with the residential to make it very objective, but we're also needing, even in our commercial, to become more objective. These are way too sub, these have objective things like pitch a roof, very, very objective. But it also has things like, oh, we'd like to see flower boxes on the windows. That'd be encouraged. But, you know, the windows should be cut up this size or that size, we think, on that side. And so some of it is very, very subjective, some of it's very, very objective. Rafi's point was, we need to become more objective in our commercial, obviously our residential. But in our commercial, we need to become more objective. No, no. Devils, devils, devils in the detail. That's exactly it. That's, that's what this meeting and maybe another meeting is all about, is to, do we first off want to do that? I think most people in the city think we should review it. It's healthy, and we need to look at it to give developers or people more of a guideline that they have some objective. But do you allow then DRC to have some subjective, not in the residential, but in the commercial, absolutely? Other people feel differently. Some people think, oh, no, make it all objective. We don't even need a DRC. Even in the commercial, some people think it's, we should throw this out and let them decide every single time. So you got extremes, you got something in the middle. We'll probably land in the middle. That's what I would think.
Well, and, well, I think too that what happens is that we definitely, I think, the Design Review Committee, it's a fairly, it's a new group except for me now, but in the past, we felt a strong need to have objective standards in place. That said, an applicant can meet all of the objective standards, and that doesn't make a, for a cohesive whole that fits within the environment that it's placed. There's so many nuances to this. So to at least begin with objective standards to help the applicant, because we've seen too many instances where we've sat up here and it's like, well, just tell us what color. And that is not what we want to be doing, nor should we be doing. We want the applicants to have a good, solid starting place. It also, that would enable staff to direct the applicant to refine their, their application before it comes before the committee, if there's big exceptions. And if there, the applicant chooses not to do so, well, then they come up before the body that will give them feedback and make a, you know, hopefully advice.
I think I understand. Start with the objective standards. If someone walks in and has the plan done and they meet the objective standards, that's great because it gives you a start. And to me, as a citizen, the purpose of the DRC that's very important is to get the applicant to do more. Not require him to do more, but to jawbone and talk. Because a lot of architects and the people who've come before the DRC, as I've experienced it, is that they're willing to do more if, if they're shown why that's important and how you feel. Not demanding it, not requiring it, but, or you require the minimum objective. And then you say, what, do you think you could change this over here because it would look a whole lot better with, in our view, in the environment? And they might say, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, many have been, yeah.
I mean, to me, it seems like that's a really important reason to keep the DRC in place.
All right. So we're not discussing dissolution of the DRC, so I just want to put that out the table. I do want to say one thing, and then I want to get more comments from, from, before moving on from the commission and then anybody else here in the audience. But with that being said, one thing to keep in mind is, while that's a, comment is, is great, comment. As I've said before, in many meetings with people, people want certainty. I want certainty in the stock market. That's just me. But, you know, it's, 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 people want certainty. When you, when you go to the grocery, you, you want to know, grocery store, you want to know, salad's going to cost you four bucks. It's the same thing with construction. It means more in construction design than anything else. Property owners, developers, who have you, doesn't matter who you are. If you own a piece of property here, the last thing you want to come to a counter and say, you want to do an addition for, you want to do a workshop, well, you know, I don't really know about the colors and maybe, that's not certainty. So if it's something that we want, rather than, if it's a demand, just, if it's something that we want as a standard, make it a standard. And then if they need to ask for, uh, an exception, then they can most certainly ask for an exception. But if it's something that you want as a standard, make it a standard. Call it a day and make it a standard. And, and, and that gives developers certainty. That gives a developer or property owner the ability to properly guide a timeline that says, I will be in and out of entitlement between six and nine months. Versus, well, I got to come back for one meeting, and then I come back for another meeting, and then I got to come back for another meeting.
And one more point to that. It also makes everybody treated pretty equally. Because the worst thing is that you, why'd you approve that, but you didn't approve this? You don't like me, you like her. You didn't like them. And, and you get that, and all the time. The DRC is, I was on DRC for 10 years, and now I'm planning for 10 years. And DRC is so subjective over the years, it's been really difficult. And then people are, are treated unfairly, and, and rightfully so.
Yeah, it's, the objective standards would give it a much more equitable approach and make level the playing field, because we really want the same standard for everybody. And this is the step to get there. I still think eventually we need a little bit more, right now we're focusing, I think, on this very specific exception almost to, to most of the standards because of the, yes, the zoning of that specific area.
That was the hot-button issue at the council meeting, which is why this is an exact issue. And we'll get a little bit more broad-bush in the next, next topic. So any other comments from commission members and committee members on this topic? Because I, I, you know, again, it sounds like we want to keep the R3 zone in the, in the design district, not of heads. Okay? But we want to have a carve-out for new structures. So that, that way, we maintain control, but we at least give the infill development a green light for the existing structures that are today. And again, it, our existing, the, the new code basically says, if you're doing under 500 and if you're doing a bump out for stairs, because that's required of you by the code, that's cool. But the minute you start changing colors and changing your facades, you, you gotta go with the DRC. So. That, that was the first set. We went over that. We, we.
The, the history, real quick, the history on that piece of property on Copenhagen at that end, you know which ones I mean? Not, yeah, these are the R3 standards. We're talking about those five, six lots down there at the end of Copenhagen. They were always in the TRC, church-related commercial. They were going to be, because of all Copenhagen is all commercial. Well, back at our last housing allocation, we were short lots. We said, why don't we take those and make them multifamily? We rezoned. But then we did an overlay and say, oh, let's make them R3, but we'll do an overlay where we can do vacation rentals. Okay, now they're really commercial, because you can't do a vacation rental at my house or your house, but on those residential, you can. So we carved them out that way. Well, now you got a problem, because there's owned R3, but we wanted them to be, because they can have vacation rentals, under our design review, and this is where we've gotten ourselves in a, in a pickle. We shouldn't have done that. Either we never should have let them have vacation rentals, but we had owners that were there that lobbied and said, this is 10, 15 years ago. Golly, they've been commercial and can't I do commercial? I'll just do this. And we had agreed to it. So some of them do it. Some of them rent them out as, as apartments. And you've got a new development coming, and I don't know which way they're going to go. That, that triggered a lot of this discussion on that R3. I don't know how many other, I believe it's the only R3 multifamily zone in our design DD. It's the only lot. So when we talk R3, we're really only talking about those lots on that, on the west end of Copenhagen, south.
Well, that's a whole. You, you, you dove into next city council meeting staff report. I don't know what mystery magic sauce you got. I would like some. But that, and that's, Aaron, you've, you've summed up half of my staff report for next city council meeting, and I appreciate that. But there's also a caveat too, is, is there's a new state law about no net loss. We'll get into that next week. All right. So, sounds like we have it. And then to answer your question, in terms of the other areas in the R3 around the city, there's actually, we are required by the state as our housing element to do objective standards for other multifamily zones, R2, R3. The city council, as part of our budget cycle, actually allocated funds to go get a consultant to go do that. And, and that would be an open meeting process, et cetera. So that's next on the foray of many things that we are trying to do here to, to catch us up with state law. For the rest of, yes, so that'll be a whole different discussion, but it needs to get done as well. So. No, no, it is not. All right. So now that I got that one out the door, we're going to move on to the next one, and, and we're going to move on to talk about design handbook. We talked about it very briefly at the city council meeting, but we're going to have a little quiz here. So on your screen, there are four images. Which one of these images is compliant with our design guidelines or sign code? So, well. So the first, the first one is, is a sign that is attached. A is a sign that's attached to our building. Looks like a banner sign. It may be a banner sign, it might not. B is a sign on a roof. Okay? C is a blade sign that is, it's a hanging blade sign off the sidewalk. And D is one of our storefronts along Copenhagen. So again, which one of these are compliant with our design guidelines, those design guidelines? Aaron, Aaron, these guys from 1989, they're still worthy, and then our existing sign ordinance. So let's wrap it up. We have 10. Anybody else? Okay, the answer. None. None. And I'll get into the reasoning's why. So A is a banner sign. We don't allow banner signs. Okay? B, while it is a beautiful sign, we don't allow roof signs. Eight, it's a logo sign. However, it's more than fifty percent of the blade sign, even though it's a great-looking logo sign. And D is a, is a projecting sign. It's a sign that hangs out from, sticks out. The, the, no, the logo. There is a sign. The logo. It's no business name on it too either. Yep. And number two is one from our guidelines. What's wrong with two? What's, what's wrong with D? Anybody know? No.
Location.
No. That's part of it. And that's not too big.
That was the location over the window.
Anybody? No. It's missing dividing pains.
Oh, we're talking window. I thought we were talking signs. Okay.
We're talking both. I said design guidelines and sign code. I said both. I said both.
I just looked at signs. Trick question.
Yes, it divides the window. So, so see these, see these windows right here? Those have dividing pains. Yeah, multiple pain. Yeah. But it requires, no, not the sign, the window. Well, no, it said sign code or design guidelines. All right. So again, our, as, as pointed out, we have these design guidelines. They're from 1990s. They're actually really good. And that's a, that's a, that's, it was a starting point for a lot of our objective standards, believe it or not. But unfortunately, one, we, we don't have like an actual digital copy, which is kind of a bummer. But two, the idea was to replace it with a handbook. And so the handbook would be updated periodically to conform with state laws and other things as, as the city council sees fit or DRC. The biggest one is interpret our objective design standards. So right now, they're, they're pretty rudimentary. Again, the whole point was to get something in the books to appease the state of California, as well as sort of make any headway of new buildings in, in the village. One of the biggest ones and biggest chief complaints we have is, and, and folks don't know, is we don't have a color palette for the village. Nothing's been adopted. It just, our design guidelines just simply say, needs to be consistent with character. Cool. And so the, the whole point is to review and, and gain input. So the, the idea and ideology is to replace our design guidelines, do this handbook, have it with illustrations, with, with functional graphics, and then actually truly adopt a, a, a starting color palette, very similar to the objective standards. Give people a starting point. And so, because Lisa, how many times do people ask, what, what do you want to see for, for colors? Every time. Literally, that is the first question they ask. What color do you want to see? I give them the blank stare. So.
Well, you know, the, we've talked about this many times. It's like the movie The Pirates of the Caribbean, right? You got the pirate code, and then he answers and goes, well, they're really just guidelines, which means that it really doesn't matter. It can be wishy-washy, and that's what these guidelines are. They need to be codified more significantly so people do know, so Lisa doesn't have to pick the color of every building in town.
Right. And, and, and even, so that is great. And then at the same token, you know, we, we have a lot of folks who are upset at some of the color selections that come before the DRC. And we have a public hearing, and no one shows. And they ask why we got these picked, and, well, there's, there's no color palette. So again, and that's some, and, and the point of the color palette is, is again, it's very similar to objections. A starting point. And if someone really wants to get out there and have a different color, be our guest. But give us a good reason. Give us a good rhyme and reason and rationale. Present your case. So if you want to flip over, we have a very open-ended question.
I have a question on the colors. Can we limit a color? For example, one of my pet peeves is we have too many buildings where the base color of the building is white. Could we say that no building within X amount of space can be the same color as another building? And make, and make that, would that be an objective standard?
Yes.
We can craft it that way.
Yes. So, yeah, but that, I get concerned about some of that because of, it's the exception that proves the rule. And that's what's so difficult about solving. There's so many different buildings. There's so many different. There's so many different owners of facades that are connected on building fronts. There's different locations, as there are in all communities, but we have a really distinctive design style to maintain here. And we do definitely need objective standards. I think everybody's in agreement. I also really encourage staff to maintain the guidelines, although they are certainly not subjective, until the objective standards are in place. And I would like to also encourage that we can start by developing a color palette and not have to do everything else because we have some excellent tools in place already. We've got, which are, you know, Danish color palettes, which are excellent to start the conversation with. So we don't have to wait for the entire handbook to be complete to get a color palette. That would be my request from the DRC because the handbook's gonna take a while.
And to your point, repainting a building, it's pretty easy compared to building new building and what's the eve length and what should the window be? You know, that's a whole major deal compared to, I'm gonna paint, yeah.
It is. So that, that's why I really feel like we have the tools to pretty quickly come together with a color palette that represents the old world. And, and you know, that probably needs its own discussion because there's also, in Copenhagen and Denmark, you've got the old world buildings with new world colors that were colors not obtainable in the old world. Our community, according to our guidelines and what we've been sitting up here doing in the past years, is going with that old world look. And we have defined that in the, the general plan going forward to kind of specifically, well, generally, I guess you should say, that it's the old world look. So we have to be real careful about that. And there's a misunderstanding at times at the colors that are in certain areas of Copenhagen that are really bright and really colorful, that could never have been obtained in the 1700s. So just thoughts to kind of keep in mind.
I feel like that an important part of the design, especially the colors, is to maintain a sense of cohesion, cohesiveness. And that is such a subjective term. So you don't want white, but you know, there's cream and then there's yellow and then there's. So that's a real slippery slope as far as creating cohesive values and yet allowing.
But that's why I framed it as a percentage of buildings as opposed to, you know, every building in the R3 is, we painted white with black timbers.
Right.
Right.
That's not something we want.
No.
Right.
But if we, if we say that white is in our color palette and timbers can be black or brown, in theory, it could end up that way unless we specify differently.
Right. Well, I think that's the, that's the role of the DRC, in my opinion, in many ways, is that, again, you can meet all the objective design standards and we can have everything defined. And that still doesn't mean that because you took all these elements that are in the objective standards and put them together, that they make, again, a cohesive whole, or even if they do, but yet how they fit into the environment in which they're placed. And that's impossible to make that an objective standard. And on that black and white thing, in the past years, we like, it's like no black, no white. It was, and that was right because that was on trend in, in design everywhere, not just in solving. That design trend is kind of now fading away. And I think we'll have much less problem or much less requests for that too. But definitely something to consider.
All right. We had a question up, if we have one answer, if you wanna. So what would you like to, design handbook to include? Checklist and templates? Well, we do have checklists already, so that part's good. Templates, we can figure that out. So I'll give you guys a few moments to provide us some input.
I lost the code. Will you pop the code back up?
If you just go to mentee.com and use the code right at the top. And then that's something that Chair Williams mentioned is could we craft something that says every other, you know, building can't be this hue? We most certainly can't. Quality of color. Yeah, that's good. And that, and the quality of color is, that's a, that's a great one. And that's, you know, trying to get property owners to work with us on that. Visual examples, would acceptable, allowable? Absolutely. I'm very much a visual person. And then colors and roof pitches? Yep.
I think examples are really good too. I think that everybody likes a, you know, a nice picture to guide you in how that works. And there's some really excellent examples of buildings that kind of go beyond. They don't just have the body color and the half timbers. Then they have the detail around the, the color between the timber. And you know, it'd be lovely to put some of those in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, the point of the design handbook is so that, you know, I know sometimes you say we're speaking a foreign language, but that's really the point of the handbook is that not only can it help the design professional, but also our property owners who aren't in the minutia, who aren't in the weeds, to be able to pick it up and easily be able to translate those graphically. And again, that's something that we want to do at a city staff level. So we don't want to farm it out. We don't want to get a consultant for it. It's something that most certainly myself and Lisa, I just volunteered to do it, so.
Volunteered.
The point of the language and the more complete the sentences and the better grammar is extremely important in all of these things. And because sometimes people read things that are shortened or are not correct in some way or whatever, it does sound like a foreign language and they don't understand it.
Right, and we are looking to do something similar with our sign ordinance once we kind of get direction of where to go. Yeah, I've worked in other jurisdictions where we've done a handbook and we've done a pamphlet and we just brought down to the nitty gritty, what is actually allowed, what's not allowed, and leave the legalese in the code, but at least give the pertinent chunks, the sound bites is what I like to call it. Are there any more comments about where we want to head with the design handbook before I move on?
I would comment that the visual aspect is really important, like Esther said, because most people are visual and they don't necessarily have that expertise to put things together. And the more we give them to look at and see, then they, they get it much quicker. And the whole process could be moved forward in a more efficient way because that's what we want to do, keep things moving forward.
Yeah, our goal is to make this as streamlined as we can with getting the results because ultimately, everybody that's here in town is here trying to do business because they find this an environment that's conducive to business. And they are realist, if they are property owners, their real estate is very valuable. Let's keep it that way by maintaining what's so unique about our community. And that's, I think, why we're all sitting here today. Mm-hmm, I agree. And that's why those of us that serve on these committees are here.
I stand on Village Design District. But you know, there's two districts bumping up against each other at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And we're trying to define colors and other objective standards on Village side. I just, we shouldn't do this, any design handbook in isolation. We gotta make sure that Village is distinct from the Mission Design District.
And it is already. So in the objective standards, there's a very distinct thing of the two. And again, the design handbook is to cover both villages, DD1 and DD2. But we're just, again, trying to get a direction of what we want to see inside of it. It's pretty clear, we want to be visual. We want it to boil down the language that it's easy to read. And again, the whole idea and genesis is to have a collaborative work effort with the DRC over the next few months as we pump out things each meeting and go over sections. Do we like this graphic? Do we not like this graphic? Do we, is this wording correct? Is this not wording correct? So.
And Dennis, to your point, the reason that DD1 is getting the attention is because that's the one that's been here forever and we've got a design, you know, guideline of DD1. We don't have anything. That's a brand new, DD2 came out of the, let's just do a DD2 on that general plan. So we're behind on that one and people are not emotional about it yet. I'm sure they will be, but that, here, you know, it's.
People don't come to Solvang to see.
DD2.
You don't come to see the architecture, the colors, the rooms, the pitches of what we're not well in the missions.
And for those who may be on, in the virtual world or in the room. So with the general plan, there's not just the Danish Design District, the.
Oh, DD1.
DD1, there's also DD2, which is the Mission Design District, which as was just mentioned, starts with the Vets Hall and the complex there and obviously the Mission and goes down towards Almo Pantado. And that's a whole different set of guidelines and standards. And it has very few projects at this time that are impacted. Whereas there's more happening in DD1, I think, that is impacted by these. Or at least there's more passion and voice because there's more color and projects.
All right, any other comments from commission members or committee members? Anybody want to come and talk versus me? All right. We will wrap that, wraps up the design portion of our program.
Before we wrap up the design, just one question for you, Raphael. I think that it's really important that once there is kind of a, well, the takeaway. I think that staff is gonna begin developing these guidelines for the handbook. I'm requesting that we start with the paint color. I'd also like to see that there's more opportunity for community input once there's the bones of this handbook put together and that we have an opportunity for a workshop at that point. Again, not just amongst the DRC and planning, but really get the community in where there's some, something to look at.
That's a, that's an excellent idea. And again, it's trying to vet this so it works for everybody. So I'm definitely all for that. I think Granny is too.
And that's true. I mean, also, a good starting point is what staff did do. I mean, I took issues with a lot of their stuff, but a lot of it's really, really good. You know, if they had an E, but maybe it shouldn't be 12 inches, it's eight inches in downtown. I don't know, the details need to be, but it was a really, it's a really good framework. That's where you start. And then you guys can pick it apart or anybody from the public can.
And we have lots to add to it and build on, which we all know, yeah.
Right, and the hardest part has been, at least looking back, and again, I'm an outsider coming in, is looking back at the old minutes of DRC, planning commission, city council, and the stops and starts of trying to get something and then it just became almost too hard and then city staff just, nah, give it up. I don't like to give up, so.
Well, and I think what we really have going for us is that we have a general plan, which has a lot of guidelines that kind of set, you know, the path forward with a lot of this.
Yeah, as with transparency and what have you. Would it make sense, once we have the outline, if you will, of this handbook, that we try to involve local architects and developers, designers, get their reaction? Because the whole point of this is, I think, to make their life easier while maintaining our standards for the city. And what we've talked about here is mostly on the city side. It might be useful to get input from, you know, the developers and architects and designers that have to work with the city.
Yeah.
We'd really like to see them at the table in the conversation because what we all know is that we have these lengthy discussions and we have things that come before us and there's no community input and then the project is executed and then we hear from the community and it's, it's too late. So we really, really want to encourage the community to come here and be part of the conversation. Give us your input so that we can, we can do our best to represent the community and move forward.
All right.
You made such a good point. You need the community in early to make these big changes. Been 30 some years since there have been these changes in the code and on zoning and objective standards and all. And the community really doesn't have a whole lot of warning about this workshop today. It was, seems like it was just happening as an afterthought and it was not a city agenda. I mean, until last week, it was not on DRC or.
Actually, it's been, it's been in the works for a while.
We didn't know anything about. We looked and looked and looked, we talked to the council and it was like, nobody knew until it was scheduled for the 26th of February.
Until the agenda comes out.
I think the city just has to do better on getting the word out early and inviting people to come. Otherwise, you know, some of us may be viewed as a bit obstructionist, but I think a lot of people in the city, you know, have a lot of good things to help you guys with, you know, in multiple points of view. We're late people. If the zoning and DRC designer view code is understandable by us, it'll be understandable by them as well.
This is also where surveys could come in handy. You know, for instance, like the solving sign ordinance survey, that was something that each business owner had a chance to take a look at. It'd be pretty simple to send and email our letter to residents and business owners soliciting input.
And I think too, ultimately, there's really not, there's, it's not being looked at as being a huge change, but rather just putting it, it's the detail that isn't present. There's too much nuance in the guidelines where it needs to be solidified to be more black and white, huh?
That's, and that's it. I mean, great example is R3 zone. I'm gonna ask you, just, do you know how to measure front setback the way our old code used to? Do you have any knowledge of that?
How to measure?
A front setback, yeah, yeah.
10 feet, I get on a ruler and measure it. I'm not sure where, the center of the street to the wall or from the sidewalk to the wall? I don't know.
So our code was exactly like that, actually. It said in certain places, it could be the center of the street, but didn't actually say the center line of the street because that's the technical term. Or in some instances, if there was a sidewalk present, it could be from the back of property line or if none of it's present, it's the judgment of the planning manager. So what?
Anything you can do to detail.
Just, I'm just, I'm giving you, I'm giving, I'm giving you examples. So the new code now says 15 feet from the back of property line. Not hard. It literally says where we measure, property line, 15 feet. But, so, and that's been the nuance of our code for the longest time, so. Yeah, that's an understatement. But those are, those essentially were majority of our changes, was that. And it just so happened to be, yeah, it's a large document, I'll give you that. But a lot of it was reorganized, a lot of it was updated and a lot of it was basically doing what the state had told us to do, so. All right, moving on.
Where's the best place a citizen can go to look at what was approved?
So, so it's on our Ecode 360 where the municipal code is under new laws. And it's sitting right there. And it's, it's a little tricky because they rechange the way the formatting of their website is, but our entire municipal code sits on our website. And it's, it's an Ecode 360 doc. And then you search solving, the entire municipal code is there and it's under new code. And they used to have a little triangle that told you that the code had changed, but that's gone, so.
You know, the public generally goes to solving municipal code zoning and what they get is a draft, as you said, it's not, it's not, and spool errors and all sorts of organizational problems, but you know, why is that still up there? I have to ask. The city leaning up there for 100 days.
And I'll, and I'll put it to you, I don't, we're only two people. So. And I'll, and I'll put it to you. I don't, we're only two people. So, you know. But, but again, but again, her door is open, my door is open. I'm available eight to five. I'm, you can email me. I'm always available. I'm always available.
It shouldn't have to be that.
But it is. It should be that way. I'm a public servant. I need to be available. Hey, we're. We're, we're here to help. So, I mean.
Well, and that's the goal of this workshop in some ways, not all of that, but at least some of it.
All right. Can I move on now? All right. All right. So, so now we're going to go to the, the sign portion of our, our workshop. So we're going to go through sort of three issues of signs. And mainly these are bigger picture issues, not necessarily the nuances of the nitty gritty. But these were three issues that were really popped out based on the sign survey that's in your staff report. That was done in, in the summer of twenty twenty four. And again, it's the same staff report that was given to the city council in November. So respondents did request additional temporary signage. Um, and so that temporary signage comes in all types and flavors and forms. So, um, but specifically, uh, two types of temporary signage, signages were, were asked for. A frame signs or sandwich board signs was the first one. So again, um, business owners were looking for ways to generate more foot traffic, more direction to their businesses, how to make themselves stand out. So currently A frame signs are prohibited, um, throughout the city period when it's supposed to have them. But there are some people that put them up. Um, and so things to remember that we have to live by is this idea that a sign regulation has to be, uh, time, place, manner. So a regulation in terms of placement, in terms of where it could be located, um, regulations of manner. So think of not necessarily look, I, I said look there, but it's more of, uh, is, does it have to be above the doorway? Does it, uh, can it only project out, uh, eight inches or, or twelve feet? Does it have to be eight feet above the door? Oh yeah, eight feet above the sidewalk. And then time, time is the other one. So, uh, time could be, if it's a temporary banner, uh, twenty days. If it's an A frame sign, it's gotta be out on the, be out during, uh, business hours and gotta come back inside during business hours. So time, place, manner, that, that is, uh, what we look for. And again, in the site, in the survey itself, that there were business owners that, that wanted this option. And, and so that's why, uh, we, we asked the council and we're having a workshop. And so, um, I will put back the QR code for those that have just joined us, um, to play along. Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, that's, there'll be a chance. Um, so. And anyways, so we're going to ask a couple of questions in regards to A frame signs. And again, if you want to join in, uh, there's the QR code. We'll flip over.
That's the QR code.
And we lost the QR code. I know.
Bring it back.
We'll bring it back.
It's the same QR code.
Yeah, it is. It, it very much is. And so, and again, if you don't have the QR code, you can go to mentee.com, uh, use code forty two oh eight six eight oh nine. So words or phrases for thoughts on A frame signs in the village. So what's we got? That, yeah. So we're just looking for word or phrases or thoughts. I believe it's bans on the public right of way. The A never allowed within reason. Hard to police. Yeah, it kind of is a little, we'll get into policing of the design in a minute. So. My idea of answers so far. So on your screen is, is some words so far and then you see the image of, of an A frame sign. Time, place, manner. So again, currently our existing code bans it straight up. But there are some options if, if, if we want to go there. So, um, we got a yes, a couple more responses before I go to the next one.
Raphael, before you move on, can you, uh, give us a little background on why they were prohibited?
Uh, that was before my time. Anybody want to chime in before?
For those words right there. That's why people say we don't, we don't want them. We, we banned off premise signs and we didn't want them. And they become off premise signs unless they're right in front of your door and da, 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 da. I use the example of on highway one down, going to LA airport. And there's huge billboard signs, right? And neon. And so I put one up and you go one bigger and you go one bigger and it's just visual pollution. If everybody had three, if everyone had one A frame sign in solving, you wouldn't see them. It, it defeats the purpose. Now, if I'm the only one with an A frame sign, I win. That isn't how it works. So it just becomes visual pollution and clutter in many people's minds. Obviously, that's how I feel, um, be- because of, of that. And there are some folks that obviously feel differently and, and, and many times the people feel differently are tucked into a courtyard or they're down a side street and they, I'm not being critical. They're not paying the bigger dollars to be on the main street. They're paying less rent off street, but they want to put those signs to bring their people down to their shops. Taking and, and advertising. So there's been talk of, if you're not on the main street, then you can have them. Well, wait a minute. Why is that? You can steal my customers when you're competing against me, but I can't have them. Well, you're in a good spot. Why pay ten times what you pay or three times what you pay? I mean, there's that, it, it becomes very heated when it, when it does come up with off premise signs or even A frame signs. Temporary signs is a whole different matter of a grand opening or sale or whatever. Everybody can, can do that because you got up the, the time, you know? But the A frames, um, it, it, it's, um, it became heated. So it's just, it's always been banned is, is what it came down to.
Well, and they became, they were a trip hazard because of location, especially in public walkways. We all know that the sidewalks, you know, at times are just jammed with people. Um, and even in private courtyards or public or private property spaces, the same thing. But definitely on the public right of ways.
So we have a couple.
Thank you for the explanations. And I think other than the trip hazard, the same could be said for almost any sign that goes up, especially temporary signs. Pretty soon everything disappears if we're doing that. So signage really is important. So thank you for that background.
So we have a comment here.
I'm Tracy. I'm from the solving chamber of commerce. I'm just going to say, having traveled to Hillsburg, having traveled to winters, having traveled to Europe, A frame signs are acceptable. If we want to be European, they are. There's a way to do it. And when you have a courtyard and you're tucked way back over here, as many of my businesses are, and they're doing, you know, hard work and they don't, people don't know they're down there. People don't know I have restaurants down in that area. We don't know we have restaurants in a courtyard. Cause they just can't see it and it's two inches by eight inches is the way. And I'll talk about way signs, way, way fair signs later, but I'm just saying, this is something if we want to be Europe, this is something we need to consider and look back. These rules were created in nineteen eighty six and nineteen eighty eight. And yes, they've been updated, but I would like them truly to be looked at for all of our businesses. Thank you.
Man, way, wayfinder signs.
Directional signs in every one of our courtyards are two inches by typically eight inches in the courtyards. I'm in a courtyard. There's a sign and unless you get right up to it, you could never tell what it was in our courtyard. You, you wouldn't know driving by.
The code allows one square foot for those, for just telling you in a courtyard in any complex.
So, thank you, Tracy, by the way. Um, anybody else want to speak on A frames? Okay. So as mentioned, there, there's a couple of ways to do it.
Can, can I just bring up one last thing? And it has to do with the survey. Because in where I took issue with the survey is that we had fifty three responses, I believe. And it all, we brought up A frame signs because of those, I think, a, a third, thirty percent, twenty nine percent said we had to have A frame signs. Well, a third of fifty is fifteen or sixteen businesses. There's a hundred and seventy to two hundred businesses in solving. The survey, I don't, I, whoever made the effort did it. I applaud you. It needs to be redone. It could come out that we have seven, seventy people want A frame signs or a hundred and twenty, and then we better listen. But when fifteen responses are A frame signs and we're going to spend time talking about it, to me, the survey is not relevant to our discussion. And we shouldn't hang our hat on that, that the survey came out that thirty percent of, literally fifteen businesses out of a hundred and seventy plus, there's, there's people that own properties that don't have businesses. And there are businesses that did not get the survey and, and didn't have a chance to respond. Back to somebody's point of bringing people in and getting them and, and maybe talking to also open to the public, not just people that have businesses in town. Because it affects locals likewise. They might want the A frame signs. They might think that's great. They may hate the, the visual clutter. So we need to do some more work on, on that.
Well, that's part of the reason why we're here. And, and. Well, I mean.
I just did that, you know? Great effort back last summer, but, you know, we just didn't have that many responses. And I know it's hard to get people to do these responses, but we had, we need to do a better job.
I didn't see this. I don't know how, how you see them, you know? I saw Facebook this two days ago. I would have made a comment.
Yeah, we, we handed them out to, to businesses and, you know, we sent links, the chamber helped out. So we try to get the word out and, um, again, but that's why we're here. So now that we have the thoughts on the, on the A frame sign, so that the question is, do, do we want them? And so, you know. So this is the next poll question is, do we want them? No frames at all, as which is the current exist, existing ban. Yes, allow A frame signs, but again, under the time, place, manner, there is a way to actually design these. There is a way to police them as long as the rules are laid out for them to happen. The other one is private property. As, as mentioned earlier, you know, do we want these on private properties? Yeah, absolutely. We don't want to see them in our sidewalk. It's, it's hard. And if you've been here during Danish days and Yule Fest, it's, it's hard enough to do, you know, A frame signs on the sidewalk, let alone getting, it's hard enough to get, to even pass through the sidewalk, let alone put an A frame sign on them. But this private property issue is a whole different ballgame. It's a whole different story. Is if it's off of our right of way, um, do, do we want to allow it? One or two, give me again, time, place, manner, regulations. So, um, anybody want to comment about that?
I just think that I had one more thing to add. It's not just time, place, manner. That enforcement, it's very possible to enforce.
Agreed.
Yeah, enforcement is hard. Um, however, again, as some other jurisdictions have done on, on the A frame signs, as they've done programs. And where the city staff has approved the A frame sign, they, they put something on it. So we know that you track it. And it, it's, you know, the cost was nothing. That's the other thing too, is, is. While enforcement, I agree, is, is, needs to be done if we green light that, how does that program look like? How does it look like if you do A frame registration? Is there a cost to it? Do we want to, you know, it, so there, there are many flavors. But again, this is just trying to open up the conversation to see what we want to do about this and how we move forward. And ultimately we have to bring something back to the council to, to say, how do you want us to move forward? This, this is an A frame sign. It just has a chalkboard background. Not, no.
That's my point. You can't just say A frame without putting some other requirements on it. And I think Tracy's comment about the way sign for those back in courtyards would eliminate the need for some of these if they were large enough to support the business.
Yeah. So, and that's a great comment. Again, when we do talk about signs, it's the same thing, time, place, manner. Manner is basically how you want it to look. So if you want it to be a, A frame sign to be wood, you want it to have, uh, metal, but you don't want plastic. That you can regulate that, that you could very much regulate that. Wayfinding signs is a whole difference. Our code talks about wayfinding, but in a more of a vehicular aspect and not necessarily an aspect of pedestrian level orientation, which it's severely lacking. And, and I a hundred percent, I saw Tracy, a hundred, I saw your email. I a hundred percent agree with you. We, we need wayfinding signs and signage types for those type and we, again, time, place, manner. If you have a certain amount, a building with a certain X amount of, 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 uh, of tenants, could you be allowed an additional wayfinding sign? And if so, how does that look? So that's a whole different subset. Uh, and most certainly, we at city staff would be open to providing, again, a tool that a, that a, that a tenant or property owner can have to help their businesses out.
Well, and the wayfinding, um, an example is the Copenhagen Square that has many signs and the applicants, you know, the tenants change, applicants come in for signs. And we've asked staff to work with the owner to come up with a directory and kind of wayfinding sign for the things that are kind of inside the building because it's become such a visual clutter over there. And right now there's not any way to limit that. But that's off topic of A frames. It looks like the consensus is for A frames on private property or, um, which I support as well. With guidelines as to the look and the time. So they go out when your business opens, they come in when your business closes. And I would suggest that they have a wood, wood or wood look. And that again, that they be, and I don't know how to put this objectively, still has to be room to walk through the pathway to the business without following around, um, the A frame signs. So.
Well, yeah, it, they'd have to meet code of what it forty eight inches, whatever it is, you know, that you have to have anyway. And then chalkboard, not white boards. Uh, black chalkboards, not green or green and black. I mean, you know, that, I, I don't know, but you know, whatever we come up with.
Specify.
Yeah, needs to be specified. Absolutely. And size, obviously.
And I think that when it's specified, it needs to be something that's readily available. And we found this out from restaurant menu signs. And the code has a specific size with a limitation. But all the type that you can commercially buy are like a half an inch bigger. An inch. Okay. A half on each side or something. Um, so we want to look at what's kind of the, we want to make it as functional as we can for the people who are going to use it.
You also need to take into consideration that if it is a windy day, you need to somehow secure that sign in some manner. So you need to take that into consideration.
But do you want sandbags sitting on crossbars all the time?
You gotta figure that out.
Yeah.
Consider signs that are stuck into a planter in the same way you consider A frame signs.
So, and that's an interesting point because it, it's in our code. But as I mentioned at the beginning, it's not stuck in stone. So it's, it's, so if that's something that, again, it's a give and take. Personally, I've never worked in a jurisdiction or even wrote codes as a consultant for a jurisdiction where, where signs were allowed in a planter. That's just, it's. I found that was kind of odd that we had that, but cool. Good for us. We, we're good. But with that being said, I mean, if that's something that we want to change, we most certainly can. However, we would have to amortize signs and there's an amortization schedule, which basically means we would have to give a property owner or tenant a certain amount of time to basically exit out the sign. And that takes time. It's not an overnight. It's not fifteen days. It's not thirty days. It's not fifty days. It's a while.
Rafi, isn't it, isn't those that are in planters? I thought they're just pole signs and ground signs must be in a planter. They, they need to be in the ground and then you, and you had to have a planter around them. I don't think they need little temporary, you know, real estate signs that, that are allowed.
There are a couple of them that are literally planted in a pot planter and they're bolted to the ground.
Yeah.
I thought they had to be wayfinding signs, not for a specific business. Yeah.
Ah, just take, take a walk down some of our-
Oh, yeah, I've seen them, but I thought that that was the case.
And, and, and again, a lot of these, and to, to your point, Esther, we've, we've now, you know, had, been here for almost a year and a half now, of, of your, and the DRCs, uh, to not allow exceptions. Or if it is an exception, you gotta give a, a good reason and rationale, and, and we're trying to do that now, when people ask for exceptions. It's not just, well, I want an exception. Okay, give me the reason. Make the findings. Give me a reason-
Compelling.
Give me a reason why they can make the findings. Um, and, and tying it back to our code. Uh, a lot of those were exceptions, which is why you see them there. So it's something to keep in mind, and again, is standards. Do we want to make it a standard? And it all comes back to that. And when you make it a standard, then it becomes, this is, this is the bar you gotta meet. If you can't meet that bar, you gotta give me a super compelling reason why you cannot meet that bar. And just because it's cheaper should not be a reason.
Which is often a driving factor.
Yes.
Can you give an example of what you meant by private property and, or when I see an A-frame sign?
Oh, well, like-
So private property is not, so city, the right-of-way is essentially what we're talking right-of-way. So we're talking the street and the sidewalk. That, that's considered right-of-way. So that's considered city property. So we wouldn't want an A-frame sign on our sidewalk, because, one, it creates an ADA hazard for Americans with Disabilities Act. Two, it creates a, yeah. So-
Like park, park place.
Park place, or, or Denmark, Denmark Square, Mortenson's Bakery, every building that I own has all this private space, and I'm the one that said, never have A-frame signs. But if we're gonna pass them, then I guess I'll have them in all my courtyards, which I disagree with, but-
But you as a property owner can limit it.
And then the property owner can limit, and the property owner can also, he's gonna have, or she's gonna have the liability if a sign goes over on somebody, so then they're gonna force it against their, because they've got insurance, and they're gonna force against their tenant, and they're gonna take that risk, or landlord's gonna say, no A-frame signs to any of your tenants. But there's lots of malls, Jensen's Courtyard, there's lots of-
All over. Right.
Correct, yeah.
So then why is there an A-frame?
From the street, if I put one between Mortenson's and, and Peasants' Feast, you'd sure see it, and it's on private property.
And again-
We're in front of, you know?
It's time, place, manner.
Yeah.
And, and again, ti- time, place, manner. And, and it's been, it was drilled in my head by my former boss, which is why I say it so fast. Um, time, place, manner. So time, uh, or place is a great example. If you don't want an A-frame sign approximately five feet from the, from the edge of right-of-way, you can write it in like that. So, again, time, place, manner.
My concern with A-frame signs is what Jennifer brought up, the stability of signs. We kind of count on our afternoon breezes around here, especially in the summer. I call it my Pacific AC when you get that nice breeze, so it's not as hot. That blows over signs. So it's, it's always gonna be, and then do you, like I said, do you want a sandbag on it? What are you gonna have for a weight? So this is why all these ordinances and these decisions become so, what seems like it should be so easy to decide becomes so complex to be able to actually put it into a code, and not have it be, um, kind of willy-nilly and such different aesthetics and placements that aren't logical, or, or impeding movement and walkways, even on private property, because I have been in private properties where it impeded the flow. See somebody in the audience?
I would just say on private property, the private property owner has the liability there, and I think they're probably smart enough to figure out how to anchor it. You can put some stipulations on things that you don't want to see, I suppose, or things that are acceptable, uh, but they'll always have to maintain ADA access. And so it strikes me, if you are not doing public property, uh, I think that properly, that problem will be solved by those who actually want them and want to put them there. I don't know that you'll see a ton of them.
And the broils are the same way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then you get sued.
Yeah.
I don't mind, I don't mind so much the A-frame. Being in real estate, we have those signs, so we're always having to level them down or keep them down with whatever we have. So it's just a stipulation, I think, that needs to be in that handbook.
If they're going to be permitted.
Correct.
You had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm a pedestrian, he wears chocolate. It comes down, it's pretty simple. Um, the city has liability issues with everything else that we do here in this town. And it, it comes to simplicity. You don't want it to blow over and hurt somebody or an ADA issue, so it's not gonna do something. It goes back to the private property owners. They can have the choice to have it. They can choose. Of course, they have to follow the rules if they're gonna have it up, and follow the modifications or whatever's being done. Liability's on them, so it's on their head. So the cities take care of themselves, private properties take care of themselves. It's a pretty simple issue. You just have to set the modification.
Right.
Yep.
Rafi, you made a point about, you probably need some, little bit of distance between public and where you put them. That's, or do you just, can you go right to the property? I don't, it's open for discussion for, for me.
And, and again, the, the point is get feedback, take to the council, and say, city staff, go, go work on it, and then we come back and more public forums and vet it, because it's not just the, it's, it's not just the distance from the public right-of-way, it's how many. And so that's, that's the other key, too, because again, that the point is we don't want, while we want to provide a tool for, for businesses, we don't want a proliferation of A-frame signs all lining up on the entry of courtyards. Then, then just that, sorry, it's not our look. Don't look great, so.
And it impedes the flow of traffic on top of that, so, yeah. So I, I, is there a cons, have we reached a consensus? Is it enough to have you report to city council?
The, the report back, I believe, is, is that, based on the feedback that we've gotten from the workshop and, and, and you folks, is to allow for A-frame signs, right, provide, you know, go craft regulations, uh, that allow for A-frame signs on private property only, uh, maintain no A-frame signs on public right-of-way. Um, that's an easy one, which is good. Um, and then discussing essentially how we're gonna do enforcement of them and, and set up a program. So that, that's essentially what we'd report back.
And one other thing, uh, that was brought up, you talked about, uh, distance from the property line, number on property, you know, I, you know, probably should not be more than one per business.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, instead of specifying from the property line, specify the maximum distance from the entrance to the, the business.
There's a couple ways to slice it, and, uh, and yeah, and that's, that's typically when, when we, when, when you write in sign codes and allow for A-frame signs, that's usually, it's gotta be X amount of feet from the doorway, it's gotta provide for ADA accessibility, you know, businesses that are fronting on this public side, street, you know, it, there are ways to craft it, uh, but we just need to get the, go start, so, all right.
I think that you've got the gist of what it seems like most of us are wishing for here.
Without me, I still say no.
Yeah. Well, that's countered by, she says yes, so.
Tracy?
I think business center needs to sign on it. If you're gonna have something new, make them sign that they have. Some of these ordinances are so old, and businesses come in, they're sold, and people don't know the ordinances. We're giving them out, it's a long page of regulations. You know that, and I know that. You've shortened it down over the last few years, but make everyone sign for it. I'm just saying, when they get their business license, it's very simple. I heard that you can't run the paper because it's too much paper to give everyone the full sign package.
Um, no.
I just make them sign for it, then they know they have signed for it, and they know the rules, and that they have it, and they receive it in hand. I just tried to find it right now and can't, on your light.
Give them a flash drive with it on there, as part of their business places.
I think what, what Tracy's saying is, they're signing that they've received this information, and it is their responsibility to abide by that. We would like to think that that would happen.
It, and, and typically, when, when a new business does want to open up, we give them a lot of information, almost overwhelming at times, simply just the amount of stuff.
Yeah, and I think that is part of the issue, is that, but that said, there still needs to eventually, we're talking more sign stuff, but there needs to be some kind of resource that's readily available and easy to find. And the Chamber can help you share that.
We've talked about this one time about enforcement, too, and I, I can't remember, maybe our city attorney said, you can't really do it, but, uh, a lot of times, we have tenants that violate sign ordinances, that's what we're talking about. They get a warning and notice, and then seven days later, if it's not down, they'll get a second one, and then they're gonna get a fine. Eventually, they'll get a fine. And you can make the fine a million dollars, they're not gonna pay. You make it ten dollars, they'll just pay it and keep violating it. They also just won't pay. And then maybe they close up and they go away, and they might have a thousand dollars worth of fines. And there's no remedy for it unless you go to the landlord, and you say, hey landlord, enforce this stuff against your tenant, because you're supposed to be responsible, and we're gonna slap it as a lien against your property. And so I'm gonna make sure that my tenants follow it, because I'm the one that's going to get the warning, and I'm going to get the fine eventually, and I'll take it out of the security deposit, or however I write up the lease. And I don't know, that to me seems like the, the way to enforce these violations. I don't care if it's a hanging sign, or, or a temporary sign, or a banner sign, or an A-frame, whatever it is. A lot of times, the tenants will ignore, and the landlord doesn't care. Well, you'll get, you'll get his or her attention, that's for sure, if there's a way to go against them, and I don't know if we can do that or not.
Well, I think at this point, aren't landlords being notified at the same time the business, or the property owners being notified along with the business owner when there's violations?
We've been doing that, yes.
We're not getting the fun.
That's true.
Well, I mean, the tools that we have for code enforcement, I'll step up to the mic and listen.
The tools that we, tools that we have for code enforcement are innumerable. Um, it's a, a continuum of force, if you will. We try to get voluntary compliance. We hope that people will follow the rules. If they don't, then we can do fines. If that doesn't work, and they're not paying the fines, then we look for other alternatives. Ultimately, as the city attorney and city prosecutor, I literally have the power to put someone in jail for a violation of our municipal code, because the municipal code can be a, a misdemeanor. Um, have I ever done that? No. Uh, would I ever do that? Not in even the most extreme case, would I ever consider that, but that is a power that we have. We also have the power to go to, um, the, um, the civil courts and seek an injunction, um, and then the courts take it up. Um, so we have this whole array, but we try to resolve it at the lowest possible level that we can. And it, it is tough, because it's, I'll be honest with you, it's a, a lost leader. We're not in it for the money. We're in it to make the code enforceable. And so it becomes a budgetary question of whether or not the city wants to spend however many dollars it is to enforce the code, knowing that you're only gonna get a hundred dollar fine. Um, so that's the thing that I have to look at when I get one of these cases coming across my desk.
Uh, in the case of an A-frame sign, I'm, I'm the type, it's like, okay, verbal warning, fine, escalate, thank you for your sign, it's gone.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that's legal or not.
Well, and back, well, you can, you can take, absolutely can.
In public right-of-way, yeah.
But, but we can't find a landlord. There's no way to, 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 we don't have that power. And we certainly have got fines. I, I just, you know, to one tenant or that, you know, can I jump that, or can you find, yeah, can you go to the landlord?
So if it's a violation of the zoning code, then it's a violation of the use of property, and it can be assessed against the landowner in that case. So there is a way that you can do it. It's a question of, if you know who the landlord is, if they're out of the area, are they going to have that kind of interest? If you can't get their attention on something like that, um, then what's the next step? Because the person that you're really trying to deal with is not the landlord typically. And if you have good landlords, and they have a good relationship with their tenant, then they'll talk with them, say, hey, cut it out. If you have a bad relationship between the tenant and the landlord, and the landlord is absentee or doesn't live in the community, and doesn't really want anything other than the monthly check for the rent, they're not gonna spend any time putting pressure on the, on the tenant in that situation. So then we have to start looking at ways, okay, is there a way that we can put it against the property itself? And that's when we get into injunctions, and that's when we get into having to take it to court. Um, don't typically do that, um, but that is a tool that we have.
And what a lot of use of time and money, also, for those kind of violations.
Some line-hand regulations. Do you think you could make the lien on the property like the IRS does? I mean, they don't even have to go to court. They could afford a lien in the courthouse.
Yeah, some property taxes.
Okay, if the city code says, these are jointly, uh, the landlord and the tenant's responsibility, and then shall be a lien against the property. Can you do that?
We're not the IRS. We don't have that power.
Or me.
We have a specific-
You can't match like that.
We have a specific set of powers that are delegated both by the state legislature and inherent to our status as the charter city. But it is an incredibly complicated process to do that, because we don't collect it, the county does. And the county has its own requirements for what it needs to see before we put anything on the property title. So the short answer is, yes, we have the power to do it. The fact that it is so complicated in terms that it's rarely enforced that way.
Thinking that, uh, Tracy had a great idea, which is that to an acknowledgement of the rules and regulations, and in that, they can also, um, be held liable for any, um, violation. Or you can also have in that same document, uh, potential forfeiture of the signs, so if you were, had the ability to take, they have to have their attention to you. Um, and it just, you just have to have the resolve to do so.
How about if you leave your business license?
When they were back in the court, I'm taking business license away, it becomes very, very, shutting a business down is really-
And I think that, that the last thing we want to do is be impeding businesses. Most of all, we just really want them to comply and everybody be successful.
I would have set at different levels. One is to find it, or obviously, or even worse, or how about city water? Shut off their water. You can't run and function the restaurant, you can't operate your business, then you're not in the code, so.
So they better pay your hundred.
So, right.
And do something. If you can, with the city, they don't want to put someone in jail, great, don't do that.
I think the state banned that, yeah.
Yeah.
The state.
Well, well, these are ideas that Nexus and the Constitution sometimes has other things, but, you know, with that being said, bringing it back to A-frame signs, there is that we got what we needed. Any, any other comments on A-frame signs?
Rafael, I was just gonna jump in and say, a lot of these ideas are good, um, or at least worth exploring. However, our code, as it's currently written, doesn't allow even some of the most rudimentary, uh, enforcement, other than giving a citation if they refuse to pay. The, the, the language is such that, you know, it's just a cumbersome process the way it's written, and that's one, one of the reasons why this whole code update is necessary.
It sure seems like you collect the fine when they come in every year to get their business license. You have to add it to the fee.
Uh, all right.
Well, I know you can stress that, but it's something that, you know, could more than a code.
If only it were that simple.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to temporary signs, and then, uh, second to last one, so that way we can get to wrapping up. Yep, for sure. All right.
Feisty.
All right, so, uh, second to last topic is, is temporary signs. So, again, we, we have existing temporary sign regulations that are inconsistent with the time, place, manner. Uh, regulations required by Reed versus Connie Gilbert, it's the case I constantly cite. Um, again, so temp, uh, here, this is an example of, of temp banners. Um, may include a placement prior to permanent signage, um, advertising for special events, um, other temporary signage envisioned by business owners. We actually have a civic events, or we, we have a civic event sign that we have a fee for, but no process, uh, that, you know, tells you enough of what's going on. Um, let's see if I can, oh, there we go. So again, these are examples of, of temp signs. Um, so we, we have the one banner sign in the middle. Um, it's expressly prohibited, uh, in our code. Uh, same with the feather flag sign that's, uh, on your right-hand side, um, also expressly prohibited, but we, we do have some property owners, uh, you know, some business owners from time to time, who are informed of the sign regulations, who we tell them over the phone about the sign regulations. We plead their case, especially at building permit process. Hey, have you thought about signs? You should get your signs. Uh, but they just, usually for, for some reason, and, and it makes sense, because if you're taking on, especially if you're a business, you're taking on, you're, you're opening up, and, and you're, you're worried about everything else, the last thing that's on your mind is signs. So, uh, the minute you open up, you, you, you're trying to get people through the door. And, and it may sound counterintuitive to a lot of folks, but it, but it's not. It, it's really not, because, you know- Because, you know, you're trying to make a vision come true, and you're trying to get a space open, or you're trying to go through a construction project, that is the last thing on your mind. As much as you don't want it to be, such as branding and other exercises, it usually ends up being the last thing on someone's mind. So again, and then the last one is that coming soon, you know, banner sign. So we do have some regulations, but again, I know we talked about the survey and respondents, but there was an inquiry about adding the additional temporary signage, because some of it is really cumbersome in terms of our temp signs. What we are trying to do from a city staff perspective is when someone comes in with a sign permit and they ask for a temp sign, we actually try to roll it in into one versus, you know, and again, trying to make sure they come under our code. But our code gets into a little bit of content in terms of what it actually needs to read. And unfortunately, I can't get into content anymore, which is why we're coming to you guys to talk about temp signs. So second to last question here as we, so now that I've given you the spiel about temp signs, we move on. So again, word of phrases for thoughts on temporary signs. If you exit out of your screen, it's menti, M-E-N-T-I dot com, use code is forty-two oh eight sixty-eight oh nine. So just give us a word or phrase for your thoughts on temporary signs.
Still concentrating on the village area, or does this apply to the?
Good question.
It's so, it's actually segregated, our sign ordinance is segregated into two, believe it or not. So if you're outside the village, it's one set of regulations. If you're inside the village, it's another. So that's part of this problem with our temp signs. And so again, we're trying to get an idea of where we want to go with this, and then sort of begin looking at it at the whole city as well, so. You have a size limit, time limit, so limits, very temporary. And again, that's the whole time, place, manner. If you're doing a temp sign, it's not a hundred days, it's not three hundred and sixty days. You know, most communities, when they do temp banners, it's, there's a size limit. And usually, it's like twenty days up, forty days down, or whatever. So again, time, place, manner.
Do we have any codes in place on that now? Because I see a lot of signs that stay a long time.
We, go ahead, Lisa, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to add, for the temporary banners that we've done, it's been more of a courtesy because the sign processing for new businesses can take a while, and because banners are technically prohibited in our code without approval by the city manager designee. It's something for new businesses we've only done, and we approve over the counter if they submit their permanent sign application as well. So with that, it's not really in our code, it's more of a courtesy. And they should be taking it down once the permanent signage is approved. And again, only for new businesses, not, you know.
Right.
Right, and the current code is content based, unfortunately, because it has to say the word grand opening or opening soon. So that's the other sort of nuance to our code, is it's got the content regulation on there. So again, it comes back to the issue of time, place, manner.
I mean, temporary signs makes sense. We've allowed them. It's, you know, especially on a grand opening, you just have to have the day, you know, thirty days before you open, and thirty days after you open, or fifteen and fifteen, whatever it is. I think that you guys have done a pretty good job on it. I know it's walking a minefield. Obviously, we ought to have a size limit, we ought to have a place limit. But it also, to me, the design ought to be, when they submit for their sign, and at least the temporary sign needs to be what that sign is that's getting approved. I mean, they're not going to open without, you know, you don't want them coming in with this design for the permit, but then they come up with this sloppy look that has nothing to do with their permanent sign. Because it can take months to get a permanent sign done, and you'd like them to have their temporary sign looking like what the permanent one that got approved. And it should be included with the sign permit. Now, if you come in for a sales sign, or going out of business, something weird that's not your permanent, going to be your permanent, it shouldn't be a hundred and ninety-six bucks, in my opinion. It ought to be fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, because it's over the counter, and it shouldn't be, that's prohibitive. But what you guys have done is let you do the temporaries with your wrapped into your other application.
Right, and we waive that one ninety-six counter fee. And then we do request the mock-up, and it does, the ones that we've approved at least, the ones that are not prohibited are mocking what their permanent signage is.
Yep, makes sense.
Yeah, all of that seems workable. And I think the big thing there is, is size, placement, time. Is that time, place, manner?
Same order. But, and again, it's, I think, right now, our temp sign also is very limiting. And again, there's also things that we're not thinking about, as special occasions. We have on occasion, we've had businesses come talk to us and ask for permission to do the anniversary. Or if they're trying to advertise a special sale, and those type of things. And again, it's very, as one noted here, complicated, yes. It is complicated, but it doesn't have to be.
But the good thing is, is temporary. So there's a time, that it can be complicated, and you don't appreciate it a hundred percent, but it's got to come down at some point.
Right, and again, how that looks and how that, you know, in terms of processing is a whole different ballgame. Previous stop I've had, we had a temporary sign registration. It was a Google form. You gave us a photo, and you told us the size, and we emailed you your vermit. Not too hard. It was free. Simply because it's, again, it's a service to our businesses, because we want to encourage our businesses to do their best possible.
Tracy has a question.
Opening a new business is about economic development. It's about economic joy to this community. Someone's coming to your community to open a business, spend a lot of money, put a lot of energy into that. If you haven't been a business owner, sitting up here where you have had to make a payroll, look at a payroll, look at everything, sometimes it's a little difficult as that sign comes up. When you end up thinking, oh, my business, I want to put it here, I thought the courtyard might be good, and it ends up not being the best place because the traffic isn't good. This is truly about us changing our tone slightly of how we think about business and what we think about business. I think Aaron has had a business, I know Jack has had a business for years, I don't know the rest of you, I apologize. But I'm saying, this is about what we do and how we treat our, your customers. Your businesses are your customers. They are the city's customers. And you have to remember that. We were told at the chamber, we've had a sign for years, it was too big. Somebody was told to take it down on Copenhagen. The next person on, got to leave it up for almost forty-five days till their sign came on mission. It's something different for each person. We need to have the same. But remember, these businesses are your customers. They are the city's customers. We need to treat them with respect, and we need to kind of be a little more delicate and give them everything. And when you have code enforcement, it should be a teaching moment. It is not, let's beat them down, and it's not going to the principal's office. It is not teaching them that they got the truant officer to them, okay? We got to just be a little more gentle and a little more friendly to the business community. We've had businesses that have shut down because somebody couldn't paint their door pink and couldn't put out an A-frame sign. And the next person paints it yellow. We've just got to look at things a little better, guys, please. Thank you.
On the enforcement, I think, I can't remember her first name.
Jennifer.
Jennifer is doing, I think, a great job. She's extremely nice. I don't think you were picking on her. But we've had terrible enforcement in years past. She's, and you guys have made her full time, I think, now, or something. And she's there on weekends, she comes around. She's very pleasant to all of my tenants that have had run-ins with her, and she does contact me directly. So I know Tracy likes her too. I mean, she's a good person.
She feels so bad, because you're giving, but you get the speeding ticket. We all know when we get the speeding ticket, we were bad. And that's what it feels like to the business owner, and that's what I'm trying to say. Just make it more of an education. Here's all the rules. Here's the forty-eight pages. Sign off on it, so we know that we're going to take your sign next week if you don't have it down. We're just going to take it.
So our, our entree with the city, at least since I've been here, is compliance, not enforcement. And Rafael carries that, Jennifer carries that. They give plenty of warnings, plenty of notice before the citation comes. It's not, you know, shoot first and ask questions later. It's clearly that. And again, I think Aaron pointed that out. And again, what we did before I started here two years ago, I can't really talk about, because I don't have knowledge. But we're definitely trying to handle it easier.
Yeah, we definitely are taking a different approach, and we are trying to take an educational approach, go this go around in terms of how we do enforcement. And certainly, we're always open to finding a way to yes, to get folks where they need to go in terms of their signage and, you know, ensuring that they're able to meet the code in some way, shape, or form.
I think too, that sitting on the DRC, our goal is to get their approval as quickly as we can so that they can get their sign made and hung up. I think the most challenging situations are when they come in, they've already had their sign fabricated. It doesn't meet the specifications that are required. They're sure that that aluminum sign with the vinyl letters they rubbed on is perfect. And we understand that they've spent money on it. It is that education component, so that they know what to expect. And that's part of why we're here too, is trying to really continue to define that.
Yeah, and I think a part of the problem again is communication, communication. Especially with temporary signs. As Tracy pointed out, I had a business in town for, what, thirteen years? And we got dinged a couple times, just because we didn't know that there was a regulation against what we were doing. We had no problem complying once we found out. But that's how we found out, is when somebody came, compliance officer came and said, no, you can't do this, and here's the regulation. And we, my wife especially, made a big effort when we started to find out what the rules were. And we still fell afoul of it. So I think we have to find a way to communicate, especially with new businesses, on what is and is not allowed. And I'm not sure that we actually know how to do that right now.
Well, I think one of the biggest stumbling blocks is that even when staff effectively communicates that, that the applicant says, well, what about that spot, that spot, they have it, another one here, because of the inconsistencies over the decades. And this group up here changes, and when five people go out and five new people come in, there's not a historical basis or body of knowledge that sticks with it, especially when staff changes as well. So that's what makes it really difficult.
And that's why codifying more and more is better, because the institution is bigger than us people, right? I mean, it's got to last longer than if city council planners or DRC, it has to. And then it gives them the tools. The other problem you run into is people don't comply, and we cite them, and they pay the citation, and they keep doing what they're doing. And people point at them and say, well, they're doing it. And we explain, well, we can't talk about what enforcement steps we're taking, but just because somebody else is doing something they're not supposed to, doesn't mean you can't. And ultimately, a lot of our enforcement is actually complaint driven. I mean, Jennifer's out on the street quite a bit, but a lot of things we discover are because somebody said, hey, what about that? So don't assume just because it's there, it's been approved either.
I think that's a good point for us to remember at the DRC too, is that you may be citing these instances, but that doesn't mean that those aren't already being, yes, or there's actions being taken to remedy that.
Also, I'm going to play devil's advocate. I mean, these are adults that come in and open a business. They got to know, and all due respect to everybody, they walked the town, they looked at stuff, they walked around and went, wow, those are nice signs, those are wood carved signs. There's not many awful signs in town that are up. And so, and I'm not going to compare it to another town, but I can go to a different town and go, I can see what, that's obviously been allowed. And I can see solving has a unique character. Second, most Christmasy town in America, we're pretty darn unique. And so they got some responsibility to open up a sign ordinance, or go in and ask for the sign ordinance before they go make a sign with sticky yellow things on it and tack it up. So, I mean, they're not, they're not, you know, I know it's a teaching moment, but goodness gracious, they're also adults going into business.
Well, I think one of the things that is my thing I tell a lot of applicants is, you know, welcome to town with your new business. They selected, you selected to come here and open your business because you thought this was a place where you could be successful. It is in part because of what sets solving apart, that brings all these people in. Help be part of that unique and special character. When you come in with something that's so outside of that aesthetic, then you're starting to dilute what makes solving, solving. Help be part of that effort that lifts everybody up and makes us unique.
I just want to chime in. Most everybody here knows I was a general manager of a homeowners association before I came here. Whenever you buy into a homeowners association, you get a list of rules, CCNRs are called. I can't count, I don't think there's enough fingers and toes in this room to count the number of times people would get quote unquote "in trouble" for not following the rules. And it's in the code. And another thought I had is how many of us, whenever we get our new phone or new software, actually read the terms and conditions that are there? We get to the bottom line, and we push the agree button, and we go on our merry way. So as much as we want and try to communicate the rules, and even if we give them a thumb drive or a booklet,
They have some responsibility.
We're still going to have the same argument. One of the audience earlier commented about not communicating about this meeting. I have other experiences where I've, I was on the TV, I was on the radio, I was quoted in the newspaper. We sent mailers, and still, when the event happened, when the effect of a fee increase happened, we had a room full of people going, how come you didn't tell me? So, you know, it's, I mean, I spent five days at the county fair, for crying out loud, in a booth, talking to everybody that came. And they still said they didn't know. So there's limits, you know. Yes, can we do better? Absolutely. But at some point, like you said, you've got to take responsibility.
I do want to piggyback off Randy a little bit too, because when I do land use clearance for business certificates, and I see that they're in the village or anywhere that would require DRC approval, I let them know that this can be a long process, and that all signs do need to be approved by DRC before they go up. And when they ask for an application, I again reiterate that it's, we have this thirty day review period, and then you go on the next meeting once your application is deemed complete. So we do try to communicate with applicants really well.
Do you provide them with a list, like a list of sign makers?
No.
No.
Not allowed to.
No. Yeah.
Okay.
But we do say, ask your neighbor or, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Find a sign you like and ask who did it. Yeah.
So it sounds like the consensus is to go ahead and look at our temporary regs. I just want to just make sure, with some head nods, no on the feather flags. I want to, yeah, okay.
But yes on the blow up.
Only in my office, is that allowed?
I do have a question for your office, Rafael. So in temporary signs, currently, it appears that they've been considered for grand openings, perhaps going out of business. But a comment was made about St. Patrick's Day or something, is staff going to consider allowing those?
Yeah, that would be folded in, again, because a lot of the stuff that's currently in the temp sign is content based. And so you got to take those out and go back to the time, place, manner, where it's specific, where it's got to be a certain timeframe connected to an action versus the holidays or other things. It can get very convoluted, so I don't really want to get into semantics. But that's what I'm hearing at this point, is city staff, go ahead and revise the temp signs to allow a little bit more flexibility, but keep it at a time, place, manner.
I think so, and for my part, I think it'd be pretty easy to regulate how many opportunities.
how many opportunities a business has to put one up during the course of the year. That would be something I think easy to regulate and, and should be able to level the playing field.
I think we do it on, on sales, one or two a year or three, I can't remember.
It's four a year, four, yeah. So I mean, it's, but again.
But I think that you have a, a really good point, Bill, there in that, um, it can be limited without having to go into content or occasion by just the number of occasions you're allowed during the course of a calendar year.
Right. Yeah. I, I mean, there's jurisdictions gonna want a quarter, which, you know, and then define the quarter, obviously. Um, and then some, you know, and again, these are things that we need to flush out as we go along, but just getting the basic direction. So. All right. Moving on to the last topic, it is getting late.
Yes.
So. And, and, and this is one slide and, and content based regulation. So, um, I feel like I've beaten the dead horse here. Um, so sign ordinance is currently content based regulation. No ifs, ands or buts about it. We talk about the allowance of neon signs for hotels, but we don't allow them for anything else. That's content based. Uh, we talk about the fonts, that's content based. We talk about the colors, that's content based. So those things, it's basically the, the key questions we have to ask ourselves as staff. Does the ordinance language refer to content or the message of the sign? If it does, it's content based. If not, is there evidence showing that the city adopted the regulation specifically because of the disagreement or agreement with the message expressed by the sign? Typically, we don't really wanna get into that, uh, but that more ties into non-commercial message signs. Those are, if you're rooting for a certain candidate or a certain proposition, et cetera. Um, so again, the side and ordinance amendments need to be clear on the reason and rationale and eliminating ambiguity, including wording, wording as preferred or expected or et cetera. So, um, content base comes in all shapes and forms and, and non-objective is, do we want lighted signs? Yes or no? It's a simple question. Um, because we, we can't have, oh, I'm a hotel, I'm allowed to have a, that's where we get into, gotta apply to everyone, straight to the board. And it makes life a lot easier because it's an easy no or an easy yes. Dimensionality is a big one. Dimensionality on signs. Um, do we want dimensionality? What is dimensionality? That could either be a pop-up of a logo or of your, of the letters, have raised letters or pop down or imprint of the razors to give that sort of handcrafted carved look. But you can most certainly measure that, whether it's a half inch, three eighths, quarters of an inch, et cetera. That's objective, but it's not necessarily dipping into the content per se. Um, so again, we're, we're looking for content based regulations. And last pull, the evening, um, on, on this is, is a ranking one. So we're gonna, we're run with the ranking one. And, and rank what we think is most important for objective design standards. Require dimensionality for logos and lettering. Require materials for types of signs. I know that our, we don't have that right now. If we don't want a metal sign, we'll say, we don't want a metal sign. If we want a wood or faux looking MDF sign, we're cool with that because again, that's keeping with our brand. Eliminating all lighted signs, including neon. It's as simple as that, yes or no. Allow for lighted signs. Do we want to even go there and allow for the lighted signs? And what I'm talking by lighted signs is, is it backing, and it's menti.com and put in the user code. If you want the, the letters to be, to be lit. We've had a couple businesses that have recently opened up requesting that. And, and the DRC has really held the line there and said no, because it's an exception. Um, and then allow for increased signs due to location. Again, that is actually a time, place manner. That is a big differential. Because there is a fundamental difference between the village and being out near Alamo, Puntado and Mission. Because that's a whole different subset. But right now, we don't, our code doesn't talk about that. It does one singular, one size fits all. And, and that can also be, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a location that's got multiple tenants, it's the same thing. So again, just rank your order as you see, you know, requirement materials, time, sites, first. Oh, dimensionality came up. And then, and then there's the other category. Am I missing something?
I have mine's timing out again, so I can give you verbal. I have a question.
Well, as in in the code.
No.
Not, yeah.
That means internally.
Internally illuminated, so I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not.
Yeah.
Don't have any lighted signs in the town?
Yeah. And that, that, and that's been illuminated internally lit, because we do have the ones that have the, the lights that downshine.
Right.
Correct. And I think that's a very appropriate look for our village. But internally illuminated signs outside may be something we wanna look at.
Right now, they've been consistently, um, you know, they're prohibited and we've been real consistent at DRC. You had mentioned, um, content of signs and words. But I believe that we are allowed to say that the sign needs to have the name of the business and then, okay, I see you kind of, yeah. So what, can you fill us in, Mr. Attorney? Uh, as to what is allowed to regulate? Cause we had an example earlier of the signs and one of them was just a logo. But that wasn't the reason it wasn't compliant. It was because of the scale. Um, we also have.
That was also a reason.
Yeah, okay. It was, it was, okay. Then we also have signs where it just says what the goods are that they're selling in the store. You know, smoothies and cones or whatever, gifts and. So what can be regulated? Abdou, are there any of those words that?
Well, I, I think you've heard Raphael say, if you have to read the sign, that's a problem right there. Um, if you have to interpret what's on there, it can be a content based restriction. So you can talk about letter height, you can talk about typeface. Um, you can talk about things that don't require you necessarily to read the message that's on the sign. Um, cause that gets you into trouble, um, because it can be content based at that point. Uh, so that's a very broad brush of what you can. Um, when you drill down into it, um, it, it's like in, in another context, the objective design standards. If you come up with objective things that don't require you to interpret the message that's on the sign, those are the kinds of things that are reasonable time, place and manner restrictions that you can enforce.
Now, you mentioned time, typeface, but we've been told font is not regulated, but you said typeface. So I consider that one in the same.
They, those terms are used interchangeably. There is a technical difference from a type setting perspective. I always use typeface, um, but font is the common word on there.
Yeah.
If there are old style, uh, samples like, uh, like you would use with a color palette, these are the type of typefaces or fonts, um, that we believe best exemplify an old world, Northern European or Danish character. Um, so you wouldn't have comic sans on signs. Uh, that would be something that would not be consistent with that. But if there are other typefaces that you would take a look at from, um, you know, old pictures of Copenhagen and you see that particular typeface, you can go to whatthefont.com, figure out what that typeface is closest to and use that as a sample that might be acceptable for the typefaces that, uh, that are, um, that are set forth in a design manual.
Interesting. Okay. Cause that does go counter to what we have, you know, been informed over the, the past couple of years.
Because it says prefer, but it doesn't provide an option.
Right.
And that's why I, we have taken, I actually said, you know what? I don't have an actual what is preferred.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna go there.
Yeah. And then it becomes a, it becomes a subjective standard in this case, but.
And I'm not sure that we even want to set that because logos are, you know, the business, um, brand. And do we want to go there? Some, you know, some of my colleagues in the past have absolutely wanted to go there.
But, but that's kind of, you know. Sure. And, and there are some that you may not want to get into that, as you say. Um, because then you're taking out of, uh, out of the hands of the applicant. But for example, there are some, um, some cities that have very strict sign codes and they forced Target to stop using a red Target and they used kind of an off, uh, like a brown color.
Seen that back.
And tho- those kind of sign codes, um, because they use a specific color, um, they can enforce that because that's, that is a content neutral thing. Um, doesn't make the people at Target headquarters particularly happy about that. But if they wanted to go into that center, um, that is how they did it. So those are the kind of things that you have to think about. So if you think about it in terms of those objective design standards, where you're not looking at whatever the message is on the sign, then those are the kind of, uh, regulations that you might be able to put into place.
So colors are okay then?
So.
Restrictions.
Right. So I think.
As long as you specify what's acceptable.
Right.
If you did not want, and, and you know, neon Pantone colors, you could say that. You could say Pantone 3563 through 3597 are not permitted.
Find in, yeah.
Right. Okay. So that you can, you can actually do that by defining it and.
Again, our existing code as it stands today doesn't do that.
Right.
City staff has erred on the side of liability. Said not to keep us out of, because you never know when that, when one applicant just might be saying, you know what? I'm gonna sue you.
But we are looking.
But we're talking about changing the code here. Let's change it.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, I'm looking forward here as we put together these design guidelines. And I know that there was a recent sign that came in and it was their corporate colors and it's pretty bright orange. And, and if there had been an option, I would have loved to have had seen them kind of become a little more earthy orange to fit within our, you know.
Remember, it's always easier, it's for, it's always easier to tell what you don't wanna see.
Right.
Yes.
And versus boxing, uh, uh, business creativity on this is, this is the only way.
Understood.
Whereas if we don't wanna see any neon or, you know, colors or pastels, et cetera, I'm just on that, pastels. Um, if we don't wanna see cosmic sands or other sansy, you know.
Bonds.
Character, then we can specify that, but it currently, like I said, as it stands today, we don't have that. So that's why.
And you asked about the menu signs that say blunders or this or this, don't we, aren't we limited to three descriptive words on our signs? And is that objective enough? It's not?
Not.
Well, it's not being applied for sure. So.
So again, that.
Can just keep.
Which is why it would morph into a.
A menu board.
A business, business sign that gives a total 10 square feet. Must be applied next to your front door and maximum, you know, you, again, now that starts to morph. Now that gives you the ability, okay, you want a menu sign? As long as it meets this criteria and letter height, have, have fun, but I'm not reading the sign.
But then conversely, what if that sign by the front door that's permanent on the wall has basically a menu on it? Cause we have places like that.
That's content, which is.
Not regulated.
We're not supposed to be.
We're not able to regulate. Yeah.
Shouldn't be. Um, and again, that's littered throughout the code.
Yeah.
Uh, and menu, trust me, menu was the first one that jumped out that, that, and I get why, and I, I get why you wanna do that. But there's a much more simplistic way to say, okay, if you want that type of signage or give a business owner some leverage, then box them into square footage, time, place, manner.
Size of the letter.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is what there's a lot of that needs more.
You know, there was, there was another bullet point you had up there that talked about size of sign depending on, on location. And it, I've thought about this a lot. It seemed, we have our wall sign, hanging sign, under canopy signs. All of them are seven square feet. And it doesn't matter if you are, um, a, a huge, you know, we, and you get a minimum. So you're gonna be a little tiny shop and have a seven, you can be a big building like the Copenhagen house and only get seven square feet. Seems like now, then you ask for an exception to you guys and say, well, can't we go bigger? Cause my building's bigger and I get that. But it seems like there should be some way, uh, we allow a ground sign and a pole sign depending on lineage, that, that there's some way that you folks could allow larger song, signs if you were that much.
Or more, and we did an exception last.
But more is, is seven, you know, you can, you can have, um, 10, seven square feet signs. Uh, we'd rather probably have you have two 14 foot signs on some big building, you know, than having just a bunch of mass. So that's something I, I wish we'd look at in our, in our ordinance at, at some point, because we haven't changed it at all. And they're not all small, little tiny buildings any longer.
And there's a way to do that. And that's typically, most municipalities do it based on what's called linear square footage.
Yeah.
So if your, your size of your sign, your wall sign increases as you have a larger frontage.
Yeah.
And then there's a minimum size or a max sign if you have less than X amount of square feet. So that, and that's something that thanks to the wizardry of computers these days, I could tell you what the average lot size is in the village and then derive something from there.
And we do have that. We have a minimum, what you're gonna get, we only go seven and then we jump it to a ground or a pole.
Right.
A 50 or 100, which is a big leap, you know, from, you know, from just going to a 12 square foot wall sign, you gotta go to a 50 square foot pole sign or not at all.
What we've seen, Aaron, more commonly isn't that, um, that it's a business that wants a bigger sign, but rather that it had, a business that has quite a length of linear feet that has multiple doors and wants, and even if the doors don't open, and that was what was at the case of the last meeting. So they wanted a sign kind of along the, the linear footage. And they did get an exception to add an additional sign so that it kind of each door had a sign at it. And I have to admit, I voted against that because that, again, it's that exception that sets a new standard.
And again, it's also the idea of allowing businesses, again, I, I go back to, business owners know what they think is best for their business. And so giving them a box to say, okay, this is your linear footage. This is the max amount of square feet you have for signage. You figure it out. And, and whether it's a projecting sign, whether it's a wall sign, whether it's a sign on a, on, on awning. But it all counts towards the same end and eventually you're gonna max out somewhere, which means you gotta start giving and taking. And that's ultimately the business owner to figure out, not us.
And maybe if you, maybe instead of having the four seven foot signs, that person would have wanted two 12 foot signs. And it wouldn't have looked so cluttered and it would have been better for him, better for the town. Uh, and we don't even allow that, you know, it's seven square feet. I guess you're gonna ask, can I go to seven and a half square feet, but you better make a finding on why.
I think that's. That would be, my, my desire would be to see you have a maximum square footage based on the frontage. If that's the formula you choose to use and whether you have two, whether you have one. Uh, there's a way to manage that and stay within the restrictions that you're trying to deal with and, and be fair to the business owner.
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah. It's an, I think that's an interesting concept. And then of course, having limitations, you can't just have.
Right, 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 right. You have a max.
Takes, you know, every, have only one that's, that takes all the square footage.
The other one that we talked about is relocated signs. It's on the same property and you move it from here and you move it to the other side of the door and you have to come in. Some of this should be done over the counter and perhaps you've been doing that, I don't know, but that was always an issue.
We have not. And again, again, it's very specific in our code that relocated signs.
Our new sign.
Our new signs. Now, I'm, again, I'm other vein that if it's already seen once and it's, you're just moving it from one location to another, I should be able to clearly be able to approve it. I mean, it's not, if everything is the same.
So here's the yes, but, and this comes to me to mind because of the inconsistencies over the years with how the signs have been approved. If you could say that it'd all been consistent, equitable and, you know, there, there hadn't been exceptions right, left, up and down, then yeah, for sure, that sounds like, and I don't know how to discern. Um, you know, I guess it's like if the sign is compliant with the current codes, then, you know, staff should be able to do.
You're saying you have a, a sign that was approved maybe through an exception 10 years ago.
And it's internally lit.
And again, codes, codes change and which is why, it's like we tell people that come to the counter today and they said, well, I, why I couldn't, I couldn't have done this addition two years ago. What's changed? The code changed. It's a new day. I, I can't tell you what happened in the past and transpired to the past, but I can most certainly tell you what happens and how to do it today. And I think that's, that's okay.
Well, couldn't you just do relocated signs as long as they meet the current code then?
Yes.
That's Rafi's point.
Yeah. Yes. To me, that would be the caveat. That was the yes, but.
All right.
Raphael?
Yeah.
Question?
You know, I, I should have locked yesterday on a, on a rate, you know.
Yeah.
Wish I, uh, free finance four years ago.
Right.
So those are the, it changes. So I understand where you're coming from. I'm gonna go off script a little bit. I wanna thank everybody that's been here. You guys are protecting the brand of solving and strategically working with the minutia we get from the state. I appreciate that more than you know. And so does everyone else, all the other residents. And so does everyone else, all the other residents. And we make it that unique place that we all love and call solving. And get rated at the second best business town in the world, so, or US. On behalf of myself and I, the other council members that are here, thank you. The reason we're here, for myself and we get the background and, and the discussion of what it takes. So, when we have that come to our council, we have a better handle of making a, making an informed decision by being part of the discussion. So, thank you so very much for all you do. And on behalf of myself, my colleagues and the city, more than appreciated. That, I'm gonna say goodbye. I've got a five, five AM wheels up, air fly tomorrow.
Dennis, you have something? You had something?
No, I was taking a bite.
Oh, oh, all right. Well, I, I, I think I got a, a clear sort of, sort of from everybody. If anyone else has something to add, I'd be happy. But it sounds like we're, we're looking to, to be a little bit more flexible with our signage, so look into flexibility. Look into colors and fonts and potentially of what we don't wanna allow instead. Uh, but ultimately, this would need to be fleshed out, again, with direction from the council, but would need to be fleshed out. Not only with the DRC and the planning commission, but, but the business community as well and particularly
I do have one, one comment on lighted signs.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't find it in here, but somewhere it said that lamps with low lumens are preferred. That's obviously not objective.
No.
And that's
So, so we need to specify not only the lumens, but I think the color temperature as well.
Agreed.
And that, and that definitely could, because we don't want the, the, what is it? The, so you want the soft yellow, but you don't want the
Right. So, you want twenty seven hundred kel.
Yeah.
Three thousand.
They call it snakel.
Not five thousand.
Not daylight, right. And Jack tying onto that, we had a, it's not a sign, but we had to put it in here somewhere. The white lights.
Yeah, agreed.
See, because they're starting to do the string lights and the white lights and some are blue and some aren't and some are like yellow. We oughta be thinking about, cause that's part of the design.
And some are multi-colored.
And that don't mean Christmas, they're year round.
Yeah, that's right.
So, we'll add that to the, to the list of flavors.
And where those can be hung too, on the building.
So, so quickly, what are, so if, is everybody good? First off, thank you, everybody
We're all fraught. Our brains are full.
Questions.
So, our next steps are, are to take it to city council for further direction on separate work efforts. Randy's working to clone me at this point. So, looking forward to that. But with that being said, again, thank you and thank you guys to, to attending. And that's all I got.
Don't run off just yet. Raphael, a bunch still on here. But I did see in the comments from the survey, one of the respondents had talked about an adjacent business having something that had, that like a witch or something that made a lot of noise. And I know while it's not a sign, it does interfere with an adjacent business and it's something perhaps that should be looked at for future regulation about, I recognize we have the, the karaoke bar and so forth and you don't wanna limit them too much. But if, if a business is interfering with an adjacent business, it should be addressed.
Okay. Thanks for that, Doug.
Yeah, even if it is Halloween.
My last, my last comment is, if it goes straight to city council and we look at it three days before and then we're gonna come to city council and we're gonna have a workshop, because we might say, I mean, I think we oughta have, I'd like to see us have one more meeting to just look at what you guys
Absolutely.
Come up with before.
The idea is to actually just get direction to go and then come back with, to go forward. And that gives us the, city staff, yes, we want you to work on this as a part of our council goals. Then we go work at it and we bring it back in chunks. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, we done? Okay. Meeting's closed at eight thirty-six.